A lot of green and white. Makes it feel good, doesn't it?
What's going on? I'm not so tense. Very quiet.
I'll shut this.
Do you need to wrap up?
Yeah, sorry.
Shh, man. It's crazy busy time for us. How do you work the first floor?
Oh. Hi.
Thank you, Dr. Rankin.
We should bring them to make a copy of something. Kill me. She's gonna call.
I'll go.
Just.
I'll get a couple.
All right, everybody. Thank you so much for being patient with us as we get going here. All right. I'd like to call the Peoria Public Schools Board of Education meeting for June 12th, 2023 to order. Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Kostick. Mr. Claus. Mrs. McConnell.
Here.
Mr. Murphy.
Here.
Dr. Rankin.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
President Ross. President Ross, can you hear me? Okay. Thank you. We have seven presenters.
Perfect. Thank you. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we begin, I wanted to thank our two, what was it? Oh, thank the two schools for the boards we have. To my left, a beautiful display by Mark Bills. Looks really great. And then over here to my right, you've got the Von Steuben Middle Schools. Presentation as well. Congratulations and thank you to both those schools for those boards. If you get a chance later, come up and take a look at them. All right, moving on. We will start with announcements.
New website. PPS has a new look. Head to peoriapublicschools.org to check out our new website. Be sure to download the app, PPS 150, to stay updated on all the amazing efforts happening across the district.
I want as well, Vice President Murphy. Reminder that immunizations and physicals are due by the first day of school, August 2nd. If you have an incoming kindergarten, sixth grade, ninth grade, or 12th grade student, make sure to schedule their immunizations and physicals now.
And good evening, everyone. Next Monday, June 19th, all schools and offices will be closed in observance of Juneteenth State Holiday.
Tip 411 reminder. Anonymous tips are accepted year round with tip 411. Head to pps150.org/tips to submit anonymous info directly to PPS admin. Submitted tips have led to welfare checks, bullying reports, community support, and more. That's tip 411. Thank you.
Summer School. The second week of summer school is well underway, and students are having a great time with small group instruction, hands-on learning, and exciting field trips. Thank you to all the teachers and staff who have made it possible.
All right, and I have two announcements to read tonight. The first one, Peoria Public School Foundation Golf Outing. The PPS Foundation will be holding their 26th Annual Golf Outing on Monday, June 26th, at the Country Club of Peoria. Register to attend at ppsfoundation.org/events. Summer Meals. All children 18 years and under are eligible to receive free breakfast and lunch at any of our school's summer meal sites. Be sure to pick up an informational flyer on your way out for more details. Okay, moving on. Awards and recognitions. Let's see here. The Remarkable Staff Award. I believe this will be from, is it Teresa Donlin? Hi. Hi, how are you? Thank you. Hi.
Hello.
My name is Teresa Donlin. And I present the school. Worked in this district as a secretary and now as a special educator for a combined total of over 20 years. I have worked with many, many dynamic and motivated people. Where I am today, without countless different people, some of whom are in this room right now, or any of me along the way. That said, I have raised someone in this district, constantly goes above and beyond our expected duties. And our students a little bit better. Of those of us officially labeled teachers, no doubt, has a significant role in the life of our students. This district. These are educated by custodians, administrator, security, every other employee in this district. Jay. You want to come up, Jayden? Please. JJ drives, he doesn't, he doesn't. JJ drives. School every morning and evening. Because the bus isn't very great and the engine's off. Captain. The second week of school. Did he know every student by name, but he knew something about them personally? JJ treats every student with respect and compassion. Of humor to distract, direct positive. A student last year struggled to correctly use the bus. Harm to the student and others. To get off the bus and teach this student how to say things. This is just one example of the commitment that he displays to our students. Phenomena number four, and I can't.
I think. Five or even five. Right. That. Um. This unit's. I'm not completely. Really excited if you just. I'm. I don't think I'm really special or that I strive to not just transport this student, but really. Find something new and something better.
And I'd just like to add to that. JJ, I think the fact that you don't think that you're doing anything special is why you're special and deserve that award. I think as a parent of a child who rides the bus, I definitely appreciate when the drivers give that kind of attention to the students on the bus. So thank you very much again for what you do.
Yeah, absolutely.
I wanted to thank Ms. Donlin for recognizing that's, recognizing him and doing, you know, the work that it took you to come up and just share with us and introduce us to him. You did a great job as well, and I'm really proud of you. We've worked many, many schools, and I'm just proud that you're a teacher. And actually, overall, as a district, we are doing more around recognizing staff of every group. So you've kicked it off for us, and we'll continue to do that throughout the upcoming years as well. So tell your peers and anyone in the listening audience, I know we have principals here. Let's continue to find people who are doing great things and let us know, and we'll definitely recognize them so that it's not just a random act of, you know, celebration, but part of our DNA as a district. It goes a long way, as JJ said, so let's, let's continue to do that. That's part of our all-staff morale initiative. Thank you, Vice President Murphy.
Yes. All right, we will be coming back to item number six at 7 o'clock for the budget hearings. So we'll move on to a number seven, Student Showcase. Richwoods Principal, William Robinson.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to recognize our baseball team, so this is all about them. So I'm going to call Coach Hogan and Coach O'Malley up here, who have been coaching at the standard of excellence since 2010.
Thank you, Board, for having us tonight. Thank you, Billy, Rondewire R A D, and the staff at Richwoods for all they have done for us all season. And thank you to our parents, families, and community for all the support we received this school year. Many of our baseball players are right over here. If you guys want to stand up really quickly, we can give them a round of applause. We talked all year about our goal being to get a little better each day. We talked about trying to be the best team that we could be by the end of the season. That was definitely evident with the season we had. Very poor regular season and a very stellar postseason is the best way to put that. But these guys did a great job of buying into that process of getting better every day, trusting in each other, trusting in Coach O'Malley, Coach Dunn, myself as a staff, and putting the work in that's necessary to be successful on the baseball field. So I'd just like to say congratulations to these guys. We have three seniors with us today, Braden Harshbarger, Caleb Lott, and Chase Clawson. So we'll be sad to see them go, but we'll be very excited to have the rest of these guys back next year. So thank you very much, Board, for recognizing us tonight. Thank you to our staff, and thank you to the community, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any family members of the players here today? If you would, please stand. Thank you. Do you have anything you want to add to that? Okay. All right. Moving on to Reservoir Principal, Principal Susan Martin.
My A D over there, too. No, you're, well, you're just welcome to come up and join us. Dr. Karat, Vice President Murphy, and members of the board, I just want to thank you for having this opportunity to introduce some of our team members. This was kind of a tough one to, to gather the, the forces and the masses, but I appreciate the opportunity to recognize all of our soccer players. So we'll come up here in a, in a moment. I just want to compliment our students on keeping their composure, that we had a lot of tough games, a lot of physical, physical and verbal games that we had to remember to show our Wildcat pride and remain respectful and show appropriate sportsmanship. So kudos to all of you that did that. And then also thank you for supporting our program. I know sometimes I call both of you more than I probably should with questions and suggestions, but just always looking to make this program better, so. Okay, we have a few. All right. Do we call everybody? I'll recognize everybody. All right. Caitlin Wenger, I believe, is here. Come on up. Maggie, I believe, is here. Ella, I don't see Ella. Addie Hoben. Evan Lott. Ada Shipman-Gosman. Come on up. Come on up. Milana Ankrum. Malia Givens. Riley Dickerson. I think I saw Riley. Kendall Kinsey. Stella Lonagran. Mabe Machard. Mara McCaw. Laney Pratt. And Sydney Swisher. We're out of the few. And our gentleman, Nathan McCarthy, Richard Flores, I didn't see them, Elijah Hari, Patrick McKenna, Maximilian Miller, Micah Regan, Jax, no, Elliot Aberley, Colin Cook, Oliver Herman, Zachary Herman, David McCarthy, Ryan McMorris, Gabe Pritchard, and Joseph Rosario. So come on up. Come on, don't be, don't be afraid.
To the listening audience, if they don't have access to the agenda, you're recognizing them because they are.
Champion soccer team. I believe we had Christmas City and. Boys and Girls.
Correct. Great job.
Congratulations. Congratulations. And do we have any family members of the, of the players here? Could you please stand? All right. Applause for them as well.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Blake Johnson, the Assistant Athletic Director. Just going to give you a quick overview of what these teams accomplished. For the girls' team, the Lady Wildcats were the number one, first off, they were the American League Champions with the 5-0 record. They were the number one overall seed in the Final Four. The semifinal game, they defeated Annie Jo Gordon 7-2. The Lady Wildcats won the championship by defeating Lincoln 4-1. And we just announced all the players' names. And for the boys, oh, their overall record was 9-0. So they did a great job throughout the city. For the boys, they finished with a record of eight wins, zero losses, and one tie. They were the American League Champions with a record of 5-0. The Wildcats dominated the regular season by posting that record of 8-0-1. The Wildcats earned a number-two seed in the Final Four. The semifinal, they defeated Liberty 10-3. They earned, that earned them a spot at the championship against Lincoln. Reservoir, Reservoir defeated Lincoln 6-0 in the championship game. So ladies and gentlemen, we presented the 2023 Peoria Public Schools Boys and Girls Soccer Champions. Please give a round of applause for the Reservoir gifted Wildcats.
Thank you, guys.
Good.
Good, thank you. All right. Now on to district presentations. We'll go ahead and start this. Dr. Susan Gersnitch. And again, we will have to stop at 7 o'clock for the budget hearing.
I have some friends with me tonight, too, so.
Okay.
Board President Ross. Vice President Murphy. Board members, Dr. Karat. I know she's not here, but I heard her, so I know she's here listening with us right now. I'm here tonight to first thank you, to give, give us a few minutes to talk about some of our career work we've been doing here in the district for the past couple of years. And tonight, we want to share with you a new software system that the counselors, these awesome folks behind me, have been asking for and our students have been asking for. So we're going to walk you through it, and I'm going to let them just jump in as we go. So very quickly, I have Nicole Varell, Kayla Steele, my Keisha Mitchell. Come on over here, don't be shy now. Okay. All right. So we looked at software called, well, we looked at a lot of software over the past couple of years. I wasn't directly involved with the software, but I kept hearing about people saying, oh, kids aren't that interested in it, they don't really like it, they're kind of tired of it. Teachers also were saying, yeah, it just doesn't hold kids' attention as much as we would like. And then our counselors were saying, Susan, we have the college and career ready indicators coming that the state's going to be requiring for us to track data and such. So we all started kind of looking for different software. And interestingly, we were at different conferences, and we all ran across this one and another one that we looked at, as well as the current one that we're using right now is Zello. So we just felt the need to change. The time was ripe. We've had Zello for eight years, I believe it is, and it just wasn't, it hasn't grown with us. It hasn't been flexible, and the, the data reports are very cumbersome to get out. So we just knew it was time for a change. So as I said, the college and career readiness indicators are coming from the state of Illinois. The Illinois PACE Framework in grades 6 through 12 laid these out very nicely. So Michelle, I'll have you switch slides. And I know that that's a little bit small, but that has all of the items in there that we are being held accountable for. That's 8 through 12. There's actually a 6th and 7th grade framework as well, and it's all coming out July 1st. We've been working on this for the past couple of years, right? And I always joked with the counselors, here I am again with my PACE framework. It's coming for sure this time. And so we have been working on it, so. Just to let you know, the three color-coded areas are career exploration, post-secondary exploration, financial aid and literacy. And Michelle, if you would go back one, all of those indicators up there are color-coded. The top part are the things that we want students to know, and the bottom, or it's vice versa, are the things we want students to demonstrate. And so it lays it out really nicely. A lot of these things we are already doing, but we're not necessarily tracking them. And our next step is to make sure that we identify where they will deliberately and intentionally occur. And we believe the software is going to help us do that. All right, so I alluded a little bit to why we should switch. The student engagement part was really a huge piece of it. Also, we wanted to make sure that we had the usability function. This is not only usable, this platform, I'm going to show you some slides of it, but it's not only got some nice functionality for the adults, but also for the students and parents. So we really like that. This does align again to our strategic plan as well. Oops, she jumped ahead of me a little bit. And it provides a student portal, so the students can actually upload their documents. And here's the cool part, this is what we've been looking for, it'll go beyond high school. And so students will still be able to use the system outside of high school, coming back and pulling out documents that they had at that time, and will help us track how our students are doing after high school, should they choose to engage, because it's got some really nice communication features in it. So we'll go ahead and go to the next slide, please. So again, this is where it shows the alignment to the PACE Framework. And if you look at the slide, you'll see the different grade levels and the checkmarks. And there's about three pages of activities and components that students can engage in. Here's another really nice feature. It tells you how long they'll take. So most of them are 5, 10, 15-minute quick activities, which when I've talked to our students who were using this, they piloted this for us, and my team's going to talk a little bit more about that. But one of the things they liked was that the, the students said they didn't have to dig through tons and tons of questions. They were sharper, faster, and more to the point. So they really liked that feature.
All right, and I hate to pause you at this time, but it's 7 o'clock, so we do need to start our budget hearing, but we will come right back to you guys as soon as we are finished with that, all right?
Commercial break.
Commercial break after these messages. All right. Okay. Mr. Willis, did you proceed with the budget hearing?
Sure. If there is anyone who wishes to speak with respect to the 2022-23 amended budget, now would be the time that you are able to do that. Going once, going twice, sold.
All right, thank you, Mr. Willis. All right, Dr. Gersnitch and your team, if you wouldn't mind stepping back up. I do apologize, it's a formality we have to do.
I know, Mr. Walter was just dying to delay my delay the action.
We were waiting to see if Dan had anything, but okay.
Oh, okay, so on the next slide, after this one, the other thing that's really nice about this is it does lay out the indicators so that the counselors can actually look in and see how many students have completed this component, this indicator, FAFSA and such. It's got a really super-nice dashboard that's interactive, and I'm telling you, intuitive. Because I played around on it, and if I can figure it out pretty fast, I figure most people can figure things out pretty fast. So we put our students on it, and they were clicking away very quickly as well. The next slide, please, shows the course selections students can take. So Dr. Karat's always like, our students have to have a five- and six-year plan, I want to see an individualized learning plan. This system has it, so our students can actually go in, they can select their courses over the next several years, and of course, adjust those. But that does two things, it helps them project out what they would like to accomplish, but also gives us an indication of predicting what courses to offer students, which is always nice as well. All right, our next slide, these are, these are just a smattering of things that we can get out of this system that we did not have in the other system. Really like the FAFSA piece, there's a scheduling aspect in this where counselors can actually push out messages to the students saying, hey, we have a career fair coming up, or hey, don't forget your parents, get your parents in to do the FAFSA. Year two, we would like to probably look at the Work-Based Learning and Industry Partner Program that they have. There's a nice badging system that goes along with that, too. So, I'm sorry, I'm losing my voice a little bit. Michelle's pushing me along, so we're going to go ahead and move on. There's also an SELP, so each time students click into the system, it just kind of says, hey, how you doing today? So it does a little temperature check, and then the counselors will get this chart sent to their dashboard, so they can really pretty quickly identify if they need to check in with a student. All right, and then the nice thing about this is, I was really impressed with the college platform that they have, because it will, students can select colleges and universities that they want to look at, but also it will say, hey, you, so your career interest piece says you want to do this? Well, these are colleges and universities that are great for that. And then the students can click on that icon and go right to that website. A lot of them have virtual tours set up and such, which is really great. This handles over 133 languages, which we have not had that quite to that extent before. We only have 29 languages, but it is nice that it will handle more. There's a scholarship section that allows students to fill out scholarships right on the portal. And again, counselors can take a look and go, okay, did they fill out their three applications, which is one of the indicators that we have. Y'all don't be shy now, okay? The nice thing is, there's these short videos in here. And one thing we've heard from our students is, please don't make us sit and listen to long, long videos of people talking. And so these were, on average, what, five, 10 minutes at the longest maybe? And on different careers, so the person would talk a little bit about what education they needed for their career, and then what their job was like, which was a really nice feature as well. I mentioned the alumni, alumni accounts, and then it also helps us with those career pathways that we're working on, and allowing students to see how, if they're taking Healthock at Richwoods, what, what can be some next steps they can go into after high school. And then there's a nice parent portal. This is not a mobile app, because we were like, oh, we really want there to be a mobile app. But here's what, what they said was, the, the, the features of it just weren't as smooth on a regular app. They found most people were going to the actual website. So when we roll this out, we can teach how to do a shortcut on people's home screens on their phones, home app, so to speak, that will shortcut them right to that website. So it's got some really nice things here, and it allows a parent to see if their student has accomplished what they were supposed to. On the student dashboard, it'll tell the student what they need to do and what the due date is. So every time a student opens up their portal, that's what they'll see. So there's no kind of, oh, I didn't know kind of thing. All right, I'm going to pass it off for just a few minutes. The team here let some students work on the system, so I'm going to let them tell you a little bit about what the student perspective was, and go ahead and talk about your perspective, because you guys are the ones that are championing this.
Good evening. I work with middle school students, fifth through eighth grade. So my main focus is immediately engaging and getting that interest going. The big difference that I saw in the two students that I had that piloted the School Links, I had a rising sixth and a rising eighth grader take it, explore it for me. One of them was frustrated because she couldn't play with it all summer. She wanted to have her login so she could interact with it. The other one made note of how much more fun it looked. The best piece that I saw, my students are just starting to think about the connections between what they're good at, what they're interested in, and how that could move into a career later. That it's not just about, I'm going to be an NBA player, or I'm going to be a doctor anymore. You know, it's, it's really trying to have that conversation with them of, where are my skills, where are my resources, what can I do? And the School Links has a Game of Life portion. So after my student, or so after the students take the career interest inventory, which is the very first thing they do, and it generates their list of careers, and they save the ones that they like, it will plug that job into the Game of Life, so it'll set their salary, and then they'll decide whether or not they're married, how many children they have, do they have a car? And it, it shows them what the budget would look like. My little rising eighth grader, she's like, yeah, no kids, no car, because like, her budget burst already. But it's just interesting, because it shows them right there, you know, in a visual sense with charts and everything. I just, it was nice to see that immediate engagement and interest in it, when that's really what we're looking for to get them hooked.
And just briefly, I work in high school setting. One of the things is, there's a celebrity connection in here, I think, associated with what's equivalent to Matchmaker in, in Zello. And so with our students, those connections of something visually popping out, being combined with seeing people that they know or recognize, and that's familiar, and also things that are short and to the point. Those things tend to work better with our students, and we see more success and more buy-in and engagement from them when we can utilize short information that they can readily get and still be able to find out what they need. So there are a few high school students that also played around with it, and we'll let Nicole talk about that.
I also work with high school students, and I piloted this program with my evening school students, and they were very interested in the ease of use. It was just easy to get in and get going when they were taking their, what's equivalent to the Matchmaker. I think it gave them a better sense of what they're interested in, because it made them choose yes or no versus somewhere in between. And that kind of skews the information that the students receive. So they were able to research, research their careers, find out what schools they can go to. Like Dr. Gersnitch said, it takes them directly to the school website. They can research financial aid, the different programs. And they also like the fact that on their dashboard, they can see what they need to do, it's color-coded. So if something is red, that means that they still need to complete it. If it's green, it's done. If it's yellow, you're close to getting completed. So it was easy for them to see what they still needed to do. And it's also, it gives the accountability back to the students, because they can see what they need to do to meet certain requirements, you know, based on the PACE framework and things like that, so they can see what they need to do to get the job done.
And going with seeing what they need to do. When you give a student a, a list of tasks to be done, like we do often through fifth through 12th grade, the student always wants to know, how long is this going to take? Well, how much I gotta do? Those questions are eliminated with this software, because it has one of five completed, one of three completed. And the color coding is key, because our students can quickly know the red, yellow, green from little babies in kindergarten. And so it carries through some of those same things that we taught them at the basic elementary level, carry on through the high school level, and they're able to be accountable at transitioning to what they're going to do when they get out there in the workforce or in college. So having a dashboard that has these items shows them, I am in charge of this, I can upload this. We get questions in the counselor's office, like, what's my GPA? I need my transcript. How many Englishes do I need? Oh, I need four years of English. Those questions are eliminated with this program, because it's a full, complete snapshot. And in Skywork, yes, Skywork gives us our platform where they can get our, get their grades. And that's well, but this drills down into some of those other required, graduation requirements, where they're constantly questioning the teachers, and they want to know the why. This system connects the why you're doing it, and the things that we talk about in different classrooms, like SMART goals. You have to do the FAFSA. Why? Because it's a graduation requirement. Oh, I want to go to college, but I didn't know that the FAFSA was the first step in getting to college. If I don't do the FAFSA, I can't get money. They don't know the connections. And so if they're experiencing this from fifth through 12th, now we have years of them making the proper connections so that they can leave us and better understand the why I'm doing this. Why do I need to go and figure out what I want to do? Why do I need this credential? Because those are the questions that are coming to the counselor's office all the time. And this system kind of eliminates those questions and puts the ownership onto them, allowing others to help them up in the process.
And also, when they
Y'all love it, I know.
We do, we love it. So also, like, when they are applying to schools and completing scholarships, all of that information is there, so they can see in one place what schools they've applied to, what scholarships are available to them. It's, they don't have to go searching to this place or that place. It even connects to Common App, and a lot of our students use that platform as well to, and parchment to get transcripts. So it's all in one place, and they don't have to go to different places to try to see what they have left to do.
And we know where they apply. That is the key, because we can't track that. We can't track that right now, so we, unless they tell us. So we have to bank on their word of mouth. And, oh yeah, I applied to that, and they gave me, you know, $2,000. And if they don't turn in the paperwork to us, we don't know. And that is a chase-down-all-year thing for counselors. So now they can upload and connect where they apply to. We can focus on the scholarships within that school, they can see the due dates, it connects with the Common App. The counselor gets a link when they add us to the Common App, and everything's in one place.
That's great, right, Ms. Mitchell? That would have alleviated that stuff we, that we experienced early on.
Yes.
Because you would have known.
Yep. And they can upload their FAFSA completion page. They can take a screenshot, and we can see that they did complete their FAFSA, so.
And just so you know, it wasn't just them. We had 23 to 25 people on the committee. We had a special education teacher, we had principal, assistant principal, multiple counselors, because like I said, they're the champions for this. So we had a pretty big committee on this. So this is what the students see when they first start. It's a really quick check. They just basically click the green checkmark if they agree, they click the red X if they don't, and then it'll move them very quickly through a series of screens. And I had fun just messing back and forth to see what kind of career I could come up with. But here's the fun part, the kids can reset it. So if they're like, oh, I really wish I didn't pick that, those three sections, I want to go back, they can just reset it and do it again. So that's one thing the kids like, too. This is an example of the Career Center that actually will let them see where jobs are across the country, as well as Illinois, how much money they can make at that job, and everything drills into deeper layers. This is that college portal I was telling you about, so they can see. I really love the fact that it shows the graduation rate, too, because that, to me, says it could be a more supportive school possibly than another school for students, you never know. But I think that's encouraging for students to see that. And then this is that Work-Based Learning and Volunteer component. We will do the volunteer hours. We encourage students to get five hours of volunteer opportunities completed each year, up to 20 hours by the time they graduate. And I, I know we had some board members a few years ago sit on a committee where we kind of made that decision that 20 hours is what we'd like to see students aim for. The other thing that's nice about this portal is, they can enter all their career development experiences in here. So if they job shadow, if they do an internship, if they go to a career fair or, or a college fair, all of that can go in this portal. And if you remember, about a month or so ago, I brought you the College and Career Pathway endorsement students. That will feed all of that information. Right now, we've got it in a spreadsheet that we hope we don't lose track of, right? If somebody leaves or whatever, but now it'll be able to stay in the portal. This, again, was the College Application and Transcript Dashboard that the counselors would be able to see. Here's that hours-tracking page that I was liking. And the financial literacy part, and I know this is the game of life, yes, the game of life. That's so important, so students can really start making those connections about, no, you cannot own the expensive house on the street if you're not working. So this is a great way for them to play around and, and check out, hey, what could my life look like? And then for the teachers and the counselors, there's lesson plans, there's different learning modules that students will participate in. And we'll have a committee meet in July, August, if you all are gracious enough to approve this tonight. And we will kind of lay out where do all these things show up in our students' learning plans. And this is the training and support that they provide. They have really nice modules. Here's the best part, again, they're like 20-minute-long, they're not hours where we're sitting and listening and it's droning on. They will do some onsite work with our team to make sure we have everything aligned to what we need our students to accomplish. And then they have a constant help center. I know you've seen this on all websites, that little bubble at the bottom that you can ask questions, so that's really nice. The other thing that's nice is, I swear now, everywhere I go, districts are using School Links, and they're working on a networking system for especially the state of Illinois schools to work together. I was at a workshop today with the regional office, and they had Vienna, Vena School District from Southern Illinois up, and they're using School Links. When I did my references, I probably talked to six, seven school districts just in the past week. Besides those, I saw at conferences, everybody has said, great customer service, very responsive. They aligned well to what the Illinois requirements were, and so they couldn't say enough about the support that they got. So this would be our projected rollout, just kind of big picture for you. Working on the front end would be administrators, counselors, and our career coaches. And then we'd start spreading it out to staff and students. These are, this is just a snapshot from School Links of the different districts that they're working with. And like I said, we just, I just talked to somebody today, I talked to Crystal Lake last week, and they only had, they have 5,000 students in their high school. And I said, okay, so be honest, you know, what are you seeing with student engagement? And they run it through a week, like, once a week, they have some dedicated time for this. He said, oh, you know, I, I thought, okay, might see three or four times each kid. They had 60,000 hits. He said he went in to look at when kids are doing it, they're doing it all hours of the day and the night. day and the ni- and night because it's so personalized. So they really love it. So you heard from the counselors. Do you guys wanna talk some more, or are you good? Okay, alright. And so, like I said, Dr. Krat's giving me get off the stage, so I'm gonna move ahead. I talked about our committee, and so, yeah, so I'll open up to questions, and I'll let these fabulous folks answer as well, if you have any questions.
Does anybody have any questions? Just real quick, um, I just wanted to say, the fact that the, the videos are those shorter time limits, the five, 10 minutes, are the students able to start those processes? And I know you said that they've kinda gotta start and stop. So if they need to stop what they're doing after watching one video, but maybe the whole thing's not completed, that'll pause it so they can come back and pick up where they left off? Is that kinda how that...
The ones I played on, I could pause, walk away, because I had to, because people kept coming into my office, so yes.
Okay. And then the other thing is, I know you were talking about, it doesn't have an app, but you're able to save the website to a home link on the thing. The only thing I would just use caution with that, uh, just because I do, have done this with work, when it doesn't have an actual app and you use it on the home screen like that, sometimes the features don't work the same as they would on a desktop because it's not been formatted for a mobile app. So just if they maybe are having trouble with it, maybe just have them say, hey, try it on the desktop instead, just in case they're having...
Absolutely, good idea.
And then the third thing that I wanted to say is, um, kudos to the two counselors who are wearing counselor shirts, as someone who also does say something shirt days a lot of times, I can appreciate your counselor t-shirts, those are really awesome, so thank you.
They're rock stars. Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Great work, team, thank you.
Alright, moving along here, the 2022-2023 Peoria Public Schools Retiree Recognition. Dr. Ike?
Good evening. Uh, Vice President Murphy, members of the board, and Dr. Krat. Uh, this is a special moment, um, the highlight of the evening, we believe. Uh, Mrs. Hammer and I are honored to present the 2022-2023 retirees to, of course, the superintendent, to the board, and to the Peoria community. I'm presenting them to you for recognition of their dedicated service to students and families of Peoria. And now, I wanna pause here and ask if any of the retirees is here tonight. I know we sent out, oh, wonderful, wonderful. Uh, why don't you stand up for a sec? I wanna see. Alright, a round of applause for them. Thank you very much. We sent out an invitation for them to either choose to be here or watch from home. I know it's a beautiful day out, but still you, you, you came in to be with us, so thank you for being here with us. Of course, of course. Um, so this past school year marks one more year that employees have continued to serve students and families right here in Peoria. And the district appreciates all employees, but especially those that have done their, their stint, uh, and are therefore trying to give you their rest. So to our retirees, as, again, some of whom are watching from home, uh, today is the day that the district has chosen to honor you for your service. Uh, without a doubt, uh, it is a bittersweet, uh, as you leave for retirement. Uh, the sweet part of it is that you deserve your rest, and you're gonna go rest. But the, so it's not really, right? But the bitter part of it is that, is knowing that you're walking away with your years of experience, um, your dedication to Peoria, and you're gonna be missed. So we, we, the district misses, I will miss all that, uh, about you. So as you reflect on your retirement, uh, please feel free to cite the words of a Cornell University professor, who, while he was being toasted as he was retiring, said that now he wants to make room for his less able and less experienced colleagues to replace him. You can brag about that as he retired. So we know that um, the spotlight is on you tonight, those that are here and those that are home, as a guest of honor. But we also want to make sure that we commend your family members who made it possible for you to give as much time to the district. So why don't we give your loved ones a round of applause before we continue? And so, um, we want to toast, give you a, toast you tonight with three phrases by saying, may you have more fun in retirement than you had at work. May you live long and prosper, and best wishes to all of you. Again, one final round of applause. And with that, ladies and gentlemen, I want to invite my colleague, uh, Mrs. Hammer, Director of uh, Employee Services, to make some introductory remarks, and then walk us through the names of the retirees before they are flashed on the screen. Mrs. Hammer?
Hi, I have some numbers, please, is what I have. Um, this year, we have 28 non-certified. We have one assistant director retiring, two homeschool facilitators, two occupational therapy assistants, three clerical, two cafeteria, one library manager, five paraprofessionals, four custodians, and eight maintenance workers. In the certified staff, we had one assistant superintendent, two principals, four speech paths, 23 teachers, which a total of 30 certified, which total is 58 retirees. With, combined together, they had 1,460 years of experience here with the district. And if you're ready to roll it, because we're ready to roll.
Thank you, Dr. Rankin, for getting the lights. Uh, thank you, Halima, for that video. That was very nicely done. And congratulations to all of our retirees, uh, present with us here tonight. A special round of applause again for all of you. Thank you. Alright, moving along at this point to number nine, presentation by audience members. I just wanna point out, at this time, Board Policy 2.230, "An individual may address the board at this time for no more than five minutes, with further time allotted as appropriate, at the discretion of the chair, and with the concurrence of the majority of the board. Total time on any one subject shall um, not exceed 20 minutes, only at the discretion of the chair, and be, and with the concurrence of the majority of the board. Each speaker will fill out a request to speak to the Board of Education card and present it to the Board Secretary before the meeting begins." At this time, we'll go ahead and begin with our first speaker tonight, or our first um, audience member, Dan Walther.
Good evening, board. Congratulations to the retirees. And uh, just a quick comment, as a former guidance counselor, I think that program that was presented looks very exciting and stuff, having been there. And congratulations and shout out to Rich Woods, the Cinderella baseball team. It was amazing year that they did with that. Um, I'm gonna try and be brief tonight. Um, opening phrase I wanted to start off with was, "I told you so." It's a phrase I hope I never have to come back to this podium and say. You've got a time between now and the beginning of the school year to look at the safety issues that I brought up to you often and stuff with it here. And uh, I've talked with Dr. Krat, and I think there may be some money coming in from the feds or from the state that would help. I think it's important that we make these schools as safe as possible. And uh, all I'm asking is for you to have that internal discussion and make that, you've got time to do that. And uh, you know, my thing is, I think we might be looking at hiring some more officers, but I think the officers we have that are, that are trained and certified should be armed so that we can protect our students as much as possible. I've substituted in every school but two in the district, and uh, only three of them have guards that actually have some kind of armed protection for them. Number of them don't even have tasers. And uh, I just am really concerned about the safety of our students and our teachers and the employees that are within those schools. So what I'm just asking you to do is consider that, that's your call whether to do that. The other thing I'd like to throw at you, it's maybe a little bit of a surprise, is the busing routes. Um, uh, former board member Dan Adler and I tried to present from this board the idea of having the older students go later in the day. And uh, if you look at the research, and what was funny about this, uh, the teacher union was opposed to this kinda thing, and Dan and I got some heat for it. But then they checked the research on it, and the research is almost universal. It's better for middle school kids and high school kids to do later in the day. And we've got a bus route that has two routes, and we did it just the opposite. And so I can't tell you how many times that I was subbing that I'd have a middle school kid or a high school kid with his head on his desk because they were, they were asleep. Will the extra half an hour, 45 minutes help? Research says, yeah. Uh, so I'd like you to really consider that. You've got time to consider that, you've got time to flip that, and you got a transportation director that the superintendent had enough confidence in to run the things that we're doing, so if that had to be done, I think you've got a time enough to do it. The reason I came to the board tonight is, I know we're starting, I believe, end of July for the next school year, but I still think you have time to take a, take a look at those, at those kinda things. The last thing I wanted to say was that you've got on the board tonight, um, a vote on Grow Your Own. Um, I think it's been a very successful program. I still don't understand why it's a partial Grow Your Own, and why we don't have that person doing this full-time. Um, my understanding is that the uh, the federation would be okay with that, the individual who's doing that would be okay with that. We need to get teachers of diversity and stuff within District 150. And I think one of the best ways to do that, and if you wanted to make that change, by the way, you still have time enough to do that change also. So uh, I guess I'm asking you to do a little homework between now and the time that the school year starts. And uh, also wanted to thank Mick, and uh, I'd been on a committee for the uh, stadium, and things are looking very nice out there, is what we've done. We got a state grant from that, and with the direction of the superintendent, I think we're gonna have a really exciting change at Peoria Stadium this year. So uh, with that, that's all I've got, nothing hostile, and congratulations to the retirees. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Alright. Up next, we have Celia Warhightower.
Good evening, Superintendent, board members, and other constituents. My name is Celia Warhightower. I'm a counselor at Elise Ford Allen Academy. This year, this fir- first year. I've been counselor, counseling in the schools before and other places, but this is my first year there. I stand proudly before you on the tall shoulders of my parents and other great people of truth and dignity that have come before me. I am the living hope and dream of my ancestors. One of my favorite Peoria pastors always preferences, I like to hear him say it, he always prefaces, when he's about to say something and he really wants you to grab it, he will preference it with saying, "I mean no harm, but..." And you know, after that, it's something that you just, it's, it's powerful, you need to hear it. So I mean no harm as I stand up here and share this with you. I'm here tonight to shine light upon a few incidents. I'm here tonight... I'm here tonight to ask for my $600-plus travel reimbursement from Peoria Public Schools, per Dr. Wilson. It disturbs me for me to have to stand up here and have to request my money that is due to me. I'm here tonight to question the communication process, or lack of exhibited throughout the year, by Dr. Wilson. I'm here tonight to create more awareness and change. Prior to this meeting, I shared with you a blue folder. And in that blue folder, on the left side, is just a couple of sheets. I just wanted to give you a briefing, because I'm not, I don't want to be up here. But this is something that you need to know. I do want my money. On the left side, there's just, that's the amount of conversation that pretty much that I've had throughout the whole year as a counselor down there. On the right side, you will find, well, I'll say, throughout the communication process, I was left out of counseling emails. I drove over here one day on my calendar. It was a scheduled event. I drove all the way over eight o'clock in the morning, only to find out that it had been canceled. Lack of communication. The final monthly meeting for counselors. We were in professional development throughout the year with some speakers from Chicago. Every counselor in there received a certificate for participating, except, guess who? Me. And I still have yet to receive that. And then it's this refusal to reimburse me. And you will see on the right side, it's some just tidbits, and we can discuss it later if you like. Refusal to reimburse for attending a counselor that she, a conference that she invited all the counselors to. And then a conference on race and equity. So, and also you will see my travel request. I'm resubmitting it. And conversation back and forth, dialogue between us. In September, Dr. Wilson suggested that interested counselors attend the ISCA, the Illinois School Counselors Association Conference, in November. Okay, several of us attended. You know, we were excited, and it was a pretty good conference. I signed, I'd signed up prior to, and if anybody knows me, I'm going to do, if I know what to do, I'm going to get it done. And I signed up prior to, filled out the registration, paid my fees, all of it out of my pocket. I submitted my forms. When I came back, submitted my forms. I called in May to check on my money, only to be told that I would not be reimbursed. It was shocking to me. Dr. Wilson said that I did not submit my forms prior to approval. I was not aware of that. Why didn't she share the travel process with me prior to attending the conference? Is that my time up? Okay. Can I finish this or allow my husband to come up? Because he's scheduled down.
So you want to use his time to speak?
I can use his time to speak.
That's what you'd like to do? Is everybody on the board okay with that? Okay, absolutely.
I'm okay with it.
Okay, thank you.
Are you okay with that, sir? Yeah, okay. I just wanted to make sure. I want to take your time.
Why didn't Dr. Wilson share the travel process with me prior to attending the conferences? Why is she withholding my money? Put yourself in my shoes. Do you know anyone in or out of their right mind who would knowingly, aware of the process and procedures, fail to submit and follow the steps, go ahead and register, pay their money, attend the conference, and have the audacity to come back and ask for reimbursement? I was told that no one knew my whereabouts. Again, put yourself in my shoes. Would you also be gone or absent from work for a Thursday and a Friday for two days of the conference and not tell your building principal or the assistant superintendent who sent you to the conference? And then show up on Monday morning and think you're still employed? That's kind of like an insult to my intelligence and character. I was not aware. You, as well as my building principal, Dr. Wilson, knew exactly where I was those two days at the conference. You failed to inform me. I was not aware of the process prior to the conferences? Change. It's my fault. We are preparing to celebrate a holiday this month entitled Juneteenth. And that involves the slaves. Had they known they were free and emancipated, do you think they would have worked two more years? I think not. They were not aware. We teach our children the rules and expectations to communicate and awareness. Are we as adults exempt from those standards? No, we must model them. In conclusion, I know that Dr. Wilson is retiring, but I would love to sit down with you all and her to work some of these things out for clarification. I have submitted to you my travel requests and papers included in hopes that you will rectify this matter and reimburse my dollars. I trust that you will also continue to create an environment of awareness, communication to help ensure the academic and personal success of our students. I contemplated on coming before you tonight, but I'm glad I did it to create awareness. I leave you with these words to ponder upon, the great educator and artist, Ida B. Wells. The only way, the way to right the wrongs is to turn the light of truth upon them. Thank you. I give back.
Thank you. All right, at this time, we will do response to audience presentation. Dr. Kratt.
Thank you, Vice President Murphy. And as always, I always say to individuals who come to the podium, thank you for coming and sharing your thoughts, concerns, comments. So Mr. Walther talked about safety, which I think we're working on, and... Anyway, thank him for his. But as it relates to that specific comments by our counselor, Ms. Hightower, it was brought to my attention a couple of weeks ago, maybe two weeks ago. And I asked for some information, and I received an email that was sent by a counselor, Casey Ahmad. They're all in this group together, counselor meetings. I was told that this idea came up about attending the Illinois School Counselor Association Conference. They were all invited to attend. So on September 13th, all the counselors received an email from one of the counselors in the group, because we have regular meetings with the counselors. They have regular meetings out here as a group, just like teachers do, and they're ongoing PD. And it says, again, that was September 13th. It said, "Good morning, team. You're receiving this email because you expressed an interest in attending the ISCA conference. This is a great opportunity for us to strengthen our skill sets and counseling department. Please register for the event and complete your travel request on Skyward. You can request 80% reimbursement upfront for the travel request." Mrs. Hightower's name is on there. Actually, the counselors who presented this evening, I don't know if you noticed, I stepped out, because I wanted to say, hey, I noticed your name is on this as well. Did you attend this conference? Tell me the process you went through. They said, yes, we attended the conference. We talked about it in our group. Those who were interested, they were told, and they received an email, to follow the process, go through Skyward. We did. Then they even mentioned your name, Kami. Once it went through the process, the principal signed off on it. So, and then once that happened, the board approved it. They said they heard from you. I guess maybe telling them it was approved. I'm not sure what you did with them, but... But so, everyone, and I think there are 12 of them, every one of them, they were able to go through the process, fill out the travel request, because remember, it has to come to the board for approval, right? So everyone was able to sort of follow the process. So that's the only thing I heard about. I didn't hear about the certificates, but the certificates, I know it's Dr. Brown, the consultant who gave out the certificate. The certificates did not come from Peoria Public Schools. So I could definitely look into that if you want me to. I can send her an email and say, hey, someone did not receive a certificate. So this is the first I'm hearing of it. I asked your principal, were you aware of this? Your principal was not aware of it. So, you know, again, everybody else in your group received, you know, went through the process. There was an email. You're on that email on September 12. It says you're receiving this email because you expressed an interest. And it didn't come from Dr. Wilson. It came from Casey Ahmad, who is one of the leaders of the group, your group. And it says, "This is a great opportunity for us to strengthen our skill sets and counseling department. Register, fill out your application, and also you can request..." So they're saying everything. So when you fill out the travel request, the principal signs off on it because it was already approved. And then it comes to central office. It gets on the agenda, and the board approves it, and then people... And that's the process. So that's, thank you.
Vice President?
Yes, President Ross.
I have a comment on this. Many, many times, from the superintendent, and Dr. Kratt knows this, down to every employee that's ever traveled, many times they travel and then submit the information later. We have gotten travel requests that's already been conducted many times. Now, I think it's really kind of petty to hold somebody's money because of what someone says didn't happen. I mean, the integrity of people should be considered first. I don't, I saw the packet, and I was quite disturbed by all the information there, because there was one gentleman in the packet that said, "I know you're supposed to be reimbursed." And let me look into that. So if you know the person went, because we know you bring things to the board all the time. Board gets blamed for everything, but you bring things to the board to approve, and sometimes people have already traveled. I mean, some of you sitting there have already traveled, and then you submit later on. Or you change your travel and you submit later on. So that is the issue when you submit later, if you submit later on. If it was a continuous thing, I could see it. But if someone made a mistake and wasn't informed, felt like they weren't informed, I just don't think that this is right to hold somebody's money that they spent. You know, she proved that she went to the conference. She took her own money and went. That in itself should show commitment to wanting to, you know, do better for our kids. I'm just not happy about this. I'm not happy about it, because I think it's, I think it's, I think it's wrong. And you can go back. We can pull every, I can, I have, I keep everything. You can pull all those incidents where you submitted reimbursement after the travel was gone to the board many, many times. Done.
Does anybody else have anything else they would like to...
Yes, in one of the emails, it says, from Casey, it says, "Dr. Wilson has approved you're attending the conference." So the approval's there. Now, it sounds like we're, you know, we're kind of picking process. And I think in the vein of professionalism, grace and courtesy out of respect for a tenured member employee, I think we need to take that in consideration, because the email says, "Dr. Wilson has approved." Now, to that point, it's been understood. And if there was something missing in terms of paper in the process, then maybe someone should have followed up. And I think we need to respect people's human nature. But more than anything, I can't help but, as a board member, we have to add value to long-term employees. If it was you, Dr. Kratt, I would want you to be reimbursed, as I would any other longstanding employee of the district. I don't think it's wisdom. It's not prudent for us to disregard a longstanding employee on a process. Yes, it is learning, and yes, we should have a, you know, standard. And going forward, we need to send out some kind of notification if that process has changed. Now, if we just have used Skyward for the last 10 years, and the process changes as we improve, but I think we need to value our employees, and I just stand... And that's the way I am see that. Thank you.
Mrs. Kostic.
Yes. I do, I agree with you, Mrs. McConnell. I'm a little confused, because Mrs. Hightower indicated that there were a couple of things that happened, and she, it had never been communicated, like coming for a meeting and not being included and so forth. I'm going to say this, and I mean this from the heart. You need to choose your battles, okay? You either, you value someone for what they are bringing to the table and what they are doing for our children. You can't say $600 that she needs to be reimbursed. She went to the, she went to the conference. Dr. Wilson was aware that she was going to the conference. She has proof that she went to the conference. Let's do the right thing. Reimburse her. Yes, there are many times that, as President Ross said, that we approve things, and it has already been done. We approved travel, and it's already been accomplished, okay? The right thing for us to do is to pay Mrs. Hightower accordingly. What she brought back from the conference, as well as the other attendees, is more valuable than the 600 and X amount of dollars that we need to reimburse her. I'm done.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments? Okay.
Sorry, I do have one. I just thought of one. While I know this is, that this situation is not on the consent agenda, I would, I know that, I would like to recommend either the administration reconsider and/or we bring this forward to the next executive meeting for us. And I know the next executive meeting isn't going to be until after we reconvene. But if administration is unable to reconsider or to come to something, I would like to request that we add this to our next executive meeting, since it's talking about a specific employee.
I think we should not carry this over into the next year. We can get a consensus that the administration reconsider to pay this person.
It's done. It's done. Yep.
Dr. Kratt just said she'll take care of it.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right. If there's nothing else on that, we're moving on to number 11, Approval of Minutes from the May 2020, I'm sorry, May 22nd, 2023. Can I get a motion to approve? Do we need to roll call for that? Mr. Secretary, will you please take?
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mr. Claus?
Aye.
Mrs. McConnell?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Dr. Rankin?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
President Ross?
Aye.
We have seven ayes. Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to information items. Superintendent update.
Thank you, Vice President Murphy. Just a few things. Again, congratulations and kudos to Peoria High. They received a gold medal for having about a minimum of eighty-five percent of their seniors filling out the FAFSA. And I saw that ISAC, it's an organization in Illinois, Chicago, they were recognizing them as well. I think it's on Facebook and it's on ISAC's website. So just wanted to give some kudos to Peoria High's faculty and staff and families for this great accomplishment. It's definitely a big deal. The other thing is, so that's Peoria High, we did have one of our teachers pass away from Richwoods. Michael McCormick, and I just wanted us to continue to keep the family, his wife, Kathy, and children, Jack and Brooke. You know, thoughts. They were by his side when he passed. He was 54. He passed away on Saturday, June 3rd. He was also a swimming coach for us as well, in addition to being a teacher, worked with the district for many, many years. So they did talk about, there's cremation that's taking place and then in that took place, and in lower flowers, donations can be made to the swim across America, or charity that raises money for cancer research and patient programs. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. And we also actually had a young kid from the rounds at CT Vivian pass away as well. I got that information. And I got that this afternoon. So I wanted to share that with you. Then summer school is up and running, and this is our second week of summer school. And it's vibrant and robust, going well. There's individualized supports in the morning and small group supports in the morning. And then in the afternoon, there's project-based learning and a lot of field trips as well. So the whole idea is to create a summer school that is vibrant and exciting, and it doesn't seem like regular school. So hopefully, the kids are enjoying it. I know they're field trips scheduled for the museum, Discovery Museum in Bloomington, Wildlife Prairie Park, several field trips. And I know a couple of them went to the Park Palooza, this big bouncy house. They did that last week, and I know they really enjoyed that as well.
You were in that as well?
I was in that as well. I'm too old to do this anymore. I was sore the next day. I did the obstacle course, and it was not a good idea. And then Communication Advantage, I would recommend, if you have a chance, I know a lot of you are very supportive of this idea. The kids, the kids are, they are doing a great job. I was very, very impressed. That's that group that's learning to the, you know, the debates and the communications program. And they were memorizing their presentations and utilizing a variety of techniques, memorization techniques. There were some, it was pretty rigorous, some huge challenging vocabulary on the board. It was, it was great. Dr. Bell, did you get a chance to visit? I was tomorrow. They were having a lot of fun. And so, yeah, I just wanted to let you know. And they're at Lincoln on the second floor. So you're welcome to visit. I think about, we have a little, between 800 to 1,000 kids enrolled for summer school. So we're plugging away and we have some great supervisors. When you go in, you feel free to, you know, there were six hubs. Dr. Molson, six sites. Six sites. And thank you. And they should have their schedule in terms of what's going on, if they're doing writing, if they're doing reading, or, you know, there's robotics as well. You've taken some pictures. Actually, I've sent you some pictures that Dr. Molson sent to me. So keep the pictures coming. And as I said to you, I'll share them with the board as well. So those were just a few things I wanted to mention. But we're up and running. It's busy. It's staffing. There's a lot going on. People are like, "Well, the kids are out, staff. You guys could take a break." It's actually our busiest time of year. Thank you.
Thank you. And our condolences to the families of the teacher who passed away from Richwoods and to the families of the student from the roundtable. Number two, financial update, budgeted, encumbered, expended, balanced, balance and percentage balance.
Year-to-date revenue, $220 million. That's up four and a half million from our last board meeting, mainly attributable to evidence-based funding or state aid. On the expenditure side, we were at $219 million. That was about $20 million more than our last report a couple of weeks ago. And we're starting to see some payroll expenses, year-end payroll expenses hit. And we'll see more of that over the next couple of weeks as well. In addition, we'll see some tax revenue come in over the next couple of weeks, all of which we expect at year end. So that's a brief recap of our finances.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Willis. Number three, proposed expenditures over $2,500.
If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
No. Sorry. Okay, none. Seeing none. Okay. Sorry. Number four, reported requests under the Freedom of Information Act and status of such requests.
Thank you. That's me. Thank you, Vice President Murphy. Since our board meeting on May 22nd, we had received one request, one new request, and there was one pending request noted on May 22nd as well. And of those requests, one request remains open, and there are two requests currently opened. So we have received to date 77 requests for this calendar year at a cost of $3,850. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we're going to be moving on to the action items consent agenda. Dr. Rankin, would you please read the list?
The consent agenda consists of, number one, gifts to the school district, year-to-date $79,374.42. Number two, payment of bills. Number three, payment for travel. Number four, human resource report. Number five, painting the interior of Peoria High. Number six, youth health education service, Holt Center for Healthy Living. Number seven, collective bargaining agreement with the Coordinating Council for Maintenance and Operation Employees, SEIU Local 8. Number eight, approval for career-focused software. Number nine, memorandum of understanding with Peoria Federation of Teachers regarding the employment status of a part-time physical therapist, Kristen Leesman. Number 10, agreement with Peoria Citizens Community for Economic Opportunity Incorporated, PCCO, Head Start Program. Number 11, an amended budget resolution. Number 12, memorandum of understanding with the Peoria Federation of Teachers, Local 780, regarding the Grow Your Own Teacher Initiative Staff Release Time. And that is the conclusion of the consent agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan King. Were there any items any board members would like to have pulled for a separate vote or discussion? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, will you please call the roll? Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Madam Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mr. Claus?
Aye.
Mrs. McConnell?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Dr. Rankin?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
President Ross?
Aye.
We have seven ayes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on now to the deliberation agenda. Do you want to read the expulsions?
Harris reads it.
Harris, did you want to read that?
Yes. The deliberation agenda, item number 13, expulsion with the expulsion to be held in abeyance. Number 14, expulsion.
Wait, you got to vote on each one individually.
Oh, we have to vote individually. Okay. Number 13, expulsion based on the report that was submitted to us June 12th, 2023.
So moved.
Madam Secretary, would you please call?
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mr. Claus?
Aye.
Mrs. McConnell?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Dr. Rankin?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
President Ross?
Aye.
We have seven ayes. Motion carries.
Item number 14, expulsion. The Board of Education approves the list dated June 12th, 2023.
So moved.
Madam Secretary.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mr. Claus?
Aye.
Mrs. McConnell?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Dr. Rankin?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
President Ross?
Aye.
We have seven ayes. Motion carries.
Item number 15, suspension review and a appeal. And the Board to approve that report dated June 12th, 2023.
So moved.
Madam Secretary, will you call the roll?
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mr. Claus?
Aye.
Mrs. McConnell?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Dr. Rankin?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Seven ayes. Motion carries.
And item number 16, alternative placement review and a appeal. And that the Board of Education approves the placement on the report dated June 12th, 2023.
So moved.
Madam Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mr. Claus?
Aye.
Mrs. McConnell?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Dr. Rankin?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
President Ross?
Aye.
We have seven ayes. Motion carries.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask for presentation and suggestion by board members.
Vice President Murphy?
Yeah.
I would just like to mention that the Yanni Collective and the Juneteenth Committee will be hosting the 2023 Juneteenth Festival this Saturday at John H. Gwynn Junior Park from 11:00 to 7:00 p.m. There's going to be a lot of fun-filled family activities. So I just wanted to kind of put the word out there regarding that event coming up this Saturday from 11:00 to 7:00 at John Gwynn Park.
Thank you. I will see you there at that.
And then I would like to make a recommendation, whenever we have presentations from the board or either from the public, that we limit those to 10 minutes for the sake of time. And that if it's something that needs to be purchased, if the board could actually see that in the board packet so that we aren't seeing it for the first time, like the details of it, I would like to get that with the board packet. So it gives us time to look at the program, Google it, look into, see what the value is, not to second-guess anyone's recommendation. But I think if we're asked to vote on it, we need to have the information in advance.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Dr. Rankin?
So I wanted to follow up with the Policy Committee to see where the recommendation is for the administrator residency that Chase and I had brought forth and then was brought to a consensus to put forth to the Policy Committee to bring to us.
We were scheduled to meet last month, or no, a week ago, and then I was on travel and then he was. And so we will carry that over into the next fiscal year if we, were we able to get another meeting scheduled before our June 23 meeting?
I don't believe so.
Okay, so then it will be carried over. We were working through some legal language in terms of housing. And if you have any feedback for us, we would like to have that.
Not necessarily because I haven't necessarily seen it, but knowing that the board reconvenes after July 1st, so that will be a new policy committee who will be taking it over. So if that is the case, if whoever the new president is puts new people in charge, I would highly recommend that there be a nice handover because not necessarily all committees have that clear handover when we do transitions in July. So whoever that person, whoever the president is, I would highly encourage and recommend that there is a good handover because that was requested, I think now three or four months ago, and it still hasn't come before the board. And so making sure that that doesn't get lost when we transition.
Yeah. The policy is not lost. We just have to be strategic, looking at union contracts for the legal side of it. And so we have gone to great lengths with the advice of the attorneys to make sure that the wording is, you know, accurate. And what we did not want to do is to rush through it and to just throw something just for the sake of time because, you know, because that is a policy and it is critical and it does, it will impact staffing.
Absolutely. Using the word union, though, just making sure that when we put it forth, we had requested administration, and administration is not part of a union. And so just making sure that that is clear as we're diving into that policy also.
Right. We are clear. It was just in the blanket statement. It was, we just wanted to make sure that everything is legally sound. Thank you.
Vice President Murphy?
Yes, President Ross.
I would just like to say that the current Policy Committee, if they desire, you know, we give them a choice. As the board president, give them a choice. If they desire to continue as that particular committee, they can do so. So it's not a, it's not a real problem to, you know, if they want to continue.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any other?
Buildings and Grounds Committee, we will resume meeting, our monthly meetings after our board reorganization on July 1st. So we will provide you with, the public with the date after that time. Also, prior to, we're not meeting this month, but prior to that, we had met with the Building and Grounds individuals, and a number of things were being done over the summer. So there's really no need to meet. There are a lot of things that are being done, roofing, windows, security, doors, and things like that. So again, we will meet after July 1st. Thank you.
And just to kind of follow up with Mrs. Kostic on that in regards to Dan's, Mr. Walters' comment earlier about security, Buildings and Ground has been addressing those issues with the team. And they will be working on several of those items over the summer as well. So does anybody else have any other, I guess we're kind of into the reports from a board committee also at that point? Any other updates? Seeing none. Can I get a motion to adjourn?